Good evening, and thank you for being here tonight for our April 21st, 2021 Board of Education Meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. At this time, I'd like to call on Ms. Dawn Craft. She will be leading us in the invocation.
Thank you. So I'm reading from "Life is Better at the Beach." Sunshine, check. Sunblock, check. Lots of time to sit and soak in the sun, check. The beach is a great place to sit back, relax, and just be while you're basking in the warmth of the sun's rays. Sometimes it's on a towel with full sun overhead. If you're sensitive to the sun, it's under an umbrella with plenty of SPF. But either way, you have time to sit and soak in the fresh air and the warm temperature. It goes without saying that today's culture is fast and frenzied. Our to-do list are never-ending, and if we're sitting, it's usually in front of a computer while working. Now more than ever before. We don't sit for pleasure. We're always on the move. When you're sitting at the beach, you have time to think about life and to ruminate over your present choices or the next six months. There's space to take deep breaths and to enjoy the stunning scenery around you instead of watching the sunset from your car. You have margin to pray quietly and sit in the Lord's presence. But once you leave the beach, often that time goes out the window. Take heart. You don't need to live that way. You can make time to sit in the quiet, just you and God. All it takes is a little discipline. Whenever you have five minutes to spare, whether it's in the early morning, after lunch, or right before bed, make it a habit to spend time alone. Make it non-negotiable, a necessity as important as eating or sleeping. You won't have days on end to sit, but even a few minutes of intentional focused sitting will be beneficial for your body and soul. Have a seat. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Craft. If everyone could stand and lead in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to call on our student board members for the board member reports. Ms. Taylor?
Okay, so we're going to start with Central Elementary School. Central Elementary had a hugely successful read-a-thon. Students read 55,191 minutes. This resulted in $7,952.77 for books for the library. Way to go CES and keep reading, reading, reading. Next, at the high school. Currituck County High School, along with JP Knapp, is preparing for the senior prom. The prom will be held on May 1st at 7:00 PM at the Whalehead Club in Corolla. The deadline for purchasing a ticket is this Friday. The cost is $25 for a single ticket and $40 for a couple. Currituck County Middle School. Currituck County Middle School's Cody Eves, PE teacher and athletic director, helped start CCS's Lego Drive supporting Kaylee's legacy in honor of Kaylee Rio's, a Camden County student, teammate, and friend of many of our own students who died from cancer this past year. The school and division are collecting new sets of Legos for patients at CHKD to use while they stay in the hospital. Each Currituck County school has a collection bin and will be collecting Legos through May 14th. Griggs Elementary School. This spring, we held a virtual Title I reading night. Students were given books to take home to encourage reading with their families. We celebrated and thanked Ms. Angel Lasher for her eight years as principal at GES. We have had a smooth transition with our interim principal, Mr. Mike Greco, and assistant principal, Ms. Ryan, being at GES full-time for the remainder of the year. We celebrated Administrative Professionals' Day and thanked Ms. Veronica Doughty for being an anchor in our school. We are looking forward to our many end-of-the-year festivities with staff and students. And lastly, JP Knapp Early College. JPK is currently working on COA registration for the 2021-2022 school year. Students must return to sign COA approval form with student and parent signature before April 23rd to ensure prompt enrollment at COA for the fall 2021 semester. A social security number is also required this year on all forms. And next, Olivia.
All right, so next is Jarvisburg Elementary School. JES celebrated Assistant Principal Week and School Librarian Day right before spring break with a staff breakfast, gifts, and plants from our local, from our social community. All students with support from our families participated in socially distant Easter egg hunts. JES had virtual field trips hosted by Jeanette's peer, thanks to Ms. Helen Taylor, our AIG teacher. Through their hands-on lab, 5th grade students were immersed in learning about ocean currents, discovering how convention currents work, and why they are important in our ecosystem. Next is Knott's Island Elementary. KIES had a very successful read-a-thon with 36 students reading over 310 hours and raising over $6,000 for our media center. Being such a small school, we are super proud about how much we earned. Currently, we are finishing up a week-long focus on our love of reading. Tomorrow, each student will receive a bag full of goodies and a book of their own. Our hope is that tomorrow night, April 22nd, each family will sit together and listen to their student read, or even better, read as a family.
Okay, so I'll start with Moyoc Elementary School. Moyoc Elementary School is wrapping up our school-wide literacy project with the Wild Robot. Students got to hear read-alouds from their teachers, administrators, and even Dr. Lutz and Ms. Doughty. Keep an eye out for the last reading. Panthers may get another visit from CCS Sheriff's Department. Next is Moyoc Middle. Moyoc Middle is excited to announce that we will be receiving a $3,000-plus startup grant from the National Archery and Schools Program, and will begin offering archery through our PE classes after our coaches complete their training on June 1st in Columbia, North Carolina. The last one we have is Charlborough Elementary School. Charlborough Elementary School is fortunate to have an outdoor classroom currently under construction. Concrete, tables, and benches will be installed soon. Fingers crossed that we will be able to hold classes beginning in May. Another thing I wanted to say is that the Currituck FFA had our plant sale this weekend, and I just want to thank everyone in the community for coming out and supporting us. It was great, and we love seeing everyone with their pictures at home, on their front porch with their plants. So thank you very much.
And also, one more thing for both JP Knapp and Currituck County High School. FBLA State's results came out this past week, and we did have a good number of winners between both schools. So congratulations to everyone there, and many of our students will be competing at Nationals this summer.
Wonderful. All right, well, thank you. Thank you for updating us with all the schools. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I have a first? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. The agenda is approved. We have our fiscal year 2021-22 draft budget for the Currituck County Schools. Ms. Larissa York, she's going to give us an update.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, tonight I'll be presenting the draft 21-22 budget resolution, the document that you have before you. If you look at that, you'll see that there are highlighted areas throughout the document. And this is where I want to point your direction so that you can see the function or the purpose code portion of the budget, which is what you, as a board, need to make your appropriation decisions. Now, just as a refresher, I'm going to go over those definitions of those functions so you have those fresh in your mind as we go over the document. Instructional Services is the cost of activities dealing directly with the interaction between teachers and students. This includes all teacher and school administration payroll and benefits, athletics, the arts, clubs, staff development, and student accounting, just to name a few. Systemwide Support Services is the cost of activities that provide system-wide support for school-based programs. This includes directors, technology and office personnel, insurance payments, IT purchases, utilities, maintenance, transportation. Ancillary Services are costs that are not directly related to the education of students. School nutrition would be in this purpose code. And lastly, non-program charges are outgoing payments to other government units, and this includes charter school and out-of-district tuition payments. Okay? The other piece of the budget that you need to make decisions is revenue, and I'll be showing you the major sources of revenue as we go through the document. All right, let's go. Section 1, page 1. Okay, our first section is the State Public School Fund, Fund 1. I'm projecting that our total State Public School Fund appropriation will be $27,970,587. Eighty-five percent of that figure will be appropriated to Instructional Services. Fifteen percent of that figure will go towards Systemwide Support Services, and less than 1% will go toward Ancillary Services. Section 2 shows you the revenue, where our state funding is coming in. Those are the PRCs or the buckets of the money, the revenue that comes in, and with those PRCs comes the rules. So each PRC has a specific rule that we have to follow, and those are the totals that I'm projecting for our draft budget.
Larissa, could I interrupt you for a second? I would just like the public here and the viewing public to know that we did review this in depth at our work session, and most of our questions were answered at that time, and therefore, the board may not be asking a lot of questions during this session. Thank you.
Okay, let's turn the page to Section 3.
Larissa? Before we move, I do want to point out that currently, due to our per-people expenditure will be reduced initially from the state allotment, and that's due to a smaller kindergarten class size, along with the effects of COVID in terms of students going to private schools and so on. We do anticipate that we'll have more than 100 students added back in after our October headcount due to restrictions from COVID going away, and also this, the general growth that we have going on at the northern end of the county.
And I'm sorry, Dr. Lutz, can you just explain real quick to everyone listening how important that formula is? Because the number is what helps with the budget.
Yes, so ultimately, your, it's called ADM, which is your annual, annual daily-
Average daily membership.
Average daily membership. I'm going down a different path with that one. Average daily membership, and that is what you are funded on, and it is a number determined by the state each year. And again, ours was reduced this past year because we were down 112 students from their projected, but I anticipate that we will be right back up there at the start of next school year.
Thank you.
Okay, page 2, Section 3. This is our local current expense fund, Fund 2. I'm projecting $12,962,591 will be appropriated to this fund. Of that amount, 56% will go into Instructional Services, 44% will go to Systemwide Support Services, less than 1% will go to Ancillary Services, and then less than 1% will go to non-program services. The revenue, Section 4, on the next page, the revenue that I'm projecting that we'll be receiving is $12,791,791 from the county appropriation, projecting $250,000 from fines and forfeitures, and $12,000 from interest earned. Section 5 is our federal grants fund, Fund 3. I am only projecting $104,620 in that fund at this moment. Usually, at this time of the year, I have my federal planning allotments ready to go, and I have nothing at this point. The only things that I have are the CTE federal grant, PRCO 17, and that's $45,775. And then we've got some CARES Act carryover that I believe that we'll have at the end of the year, and that's about $58,845. Now, I do believe that I'll be bringing a budget amendment to you next year when I get those planning allotments, and I'm thinking it'll come in around $1.6 million. We are also getting SRR2 funding. I'm not sure if that will be by the end of the year or next year. If it's by the end of the year, you'll get a budget amendment with that amount, and we're looking at about $1.8 million in SRR2 funding. We are also getting SRR3 funding. That will definitely be next year. So we're looking at around $4 million for that. So you'll probably see a budget amendment for that also. Okay, Section 7 is our capital outlay fund, Fund 4, and you'll be actually voting on that tonight. I'm projecting $1,805,000 for that fund. Instructional Services is less than 1%. Capital fund does not fund Instructional Services. What it does fund is Systemwide Support Services, 98% of the money's going there. And Ancillary Services are also less than 1%. The box right underneath that is showing you where the funds will be appropriated by location. And if you turn the page, Section 8.
And I do want to point out on the capital fund again that normally Moyoc Elementary would receive a larger appropriation due to the age and structure of the building. With the renovation projects, there, we are, with the renovation projects in full spring starting on June 1, plenty of funds are going to be allocated both to Moyoc Elementary and Moyoc Middle School. And our newer buildings, Jarvisburg and Charlborough, they have also the smallest, but that would be appropriate as they are newer construction.
Okay, Section 8 is showing you where that revenue is coming from. We're going to be asking $405,000 from the state lottery for next year, and county appropriation will be $1.4 million. Section 9 is our School Nutrition Fund, Fund 5, and we're projecting $1,620,562. 91% of that is Ancillary Services, School Nutrition. So most of that money is going towards School Nutrition, because that's what it is. Non-program services will be about 9%. Section 10 is going to show you the revenues where that money will come from. Section 11 is our Other Local Fund, Fund 8. This is where you're going to find your grants that are not federal and they're not state. They're something else. So they're going to be in your Fund 8 Other Local Fund. I'm projecting $960,907 for this fund. 83% will be going towards Instructional Services, and 17% will be going towards Systemwide Support Services. And Section 12 is showing you where the revenue is coming from, state sources, federal sources, such as SEPREK, JCPC, ROTC, Medicaid. Also, we've got tuition, interest in there. So that's kind of, kind of a catch-all fund for us. So that leads us to our total operating budget for all funds of $45,424,267. In conclusion, I just want to point out a few quick things. 73% of this entire draft budget resolution is appropriated to Instructional Services, which makes sense because we are in the business to educate kids. So that's where the bulk of our, of our budget is being appropriated. 26% is being appropriated to Systemwide Support Services to support those Instructional Services, to educate our children. And almost 80% of the entire draft budget resolution is for payroll and benefits. So a large, large portion of our budget goes to our employees and our personnel.
And the great majority comes from state and local funds?
That's correct.
Out of $45 million?
Yes.
We only get $104,000 from federal.
Well, she hasn't got her budget yet from it.
I don't have my federal allotments yet. I'm guessing about 1.6% for next year.
But still, that's a small portion.
It is. It's a very small piece of our pie. Yeah. And then the last thing I wanted to point out is that I'm not using any local fund balance to balance the budget. So once, I didn't do it last year, not doing it again this year. We are, we're not using any local fund balance. Hopefully, we're building that budget, or that fund balance as we go in the coming years.
As was recommended by-
As was recommended.
-the last few audits and the Evergreen Report.
Yes. Yep, we're going to work hard for that.
Well, thank you for all of your hard work, Ms. York.
Now, this was the first reading, but do you need action on Fund 4, capital outlay?
Capital outlay is in our consent agenda.
We're going to go ahead and approve this as a first reading if I have a motion from the floor to approve this.
So moved.
A second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries for our first reading of the 2021-22 draft budget for Currituck County Schools. Thank you, Ms. York.
Yes, thank you, Ms. York, because that's a very nice report that you break it down for us, and-
Okay, I'm glad you liked it.
Thank you.
All right. 2021 Graduation and Prom Update. I can't believe it's that time of year already, but I'm looking forward to some fun activities for our kids and our students, and so I'm looking forward to seeing them dressed up there at the Whalehead Club, and then their upcoming graduation. So, Dr. Lutz, if you and Ms. Doughty want to update us?
Absolutely. So excited that, you know, we had a graduation last year, one of the few in the state, and we're definitely going to proceed with graduation again this year. JP Knapp will hold their graduation at COA Campus in Elizabeth City on the 21st. That's Friday night on May 21st. And at this point in time, only two guests per student are allowed to attend. It is an indoor event, and so we're still limited by our governor's orders regarding the COVID restrictions and so on. Our traditional high school, Currituck County High School, will hold their graduation on Thursday, May 27th, with a rain date of Friday and a rain date of Saturday. No matter what, we are intent on holding that graduation outdoors. At this point in time, students are allowed to bring four, four people to their graduation. Again, if we have an opportunity to allow more family members to attend, we certainly will do that. We anxiously watch updates from our governor regarding the COVID restrictions.
And Dr. Lutz, as discussed in the work session, if students who don't have or are not using their tickets, they're freely able to share them with their friends, right?
Yes, each student will get four tickets at this time, which they can redistribute. They can maybe start like a StubHub process or something, you know? Okay. Prom update. This is, I think this is a really, I'm so excited to share this information. Just the, this entire county has come together to create a great celebration for our seniors. It is a senior-only prom, combining both of our high schools. Each of our seniors can bring a single guest. It's being held at the Whalehead Club with no charge whatsoever for the venue, thanks to our county. What a beautiful venue. Can't ask for anything more. Well, plenty of people will be on hand to help support that activity. Three deputies from the sheriff's office will be giving of their time that night. We have a DJ that the Moyoc Women's Club has provided. We also have food that is being donated from OBX popcorn. We have desserts from Cindy's Kitchen, and we have food from Currituck Barbecue. So it's a true Currituck event for our kids. In addition, our county government has also supported our schools once again, providing tents for our students in case of weather, and a beautiful setting. We, the county has always supported Operation Graduation, and they re-appropriated those funds at their most recent meeting to support this prom and make a special event for seniors who really have not had anything close to a traditional junior and senior year.
No.
In addition, we're also going to provide buses for students if they need to be bused to the Whalehead Club, and staff members will chaperone. We have favors for each student, and of course, hand sanitizer, masks will be on hand, and everything will be with paper products and paper plates. I think it should be an amazing night. The board is invited to step on out. I took the opportunity to ask my wife to the prom again, about 30 years after the fact. She said, "Yes, again."
That was her.
Went shopping. Looking forward to a wonderful night under the stars.
That's wonderful. I'm so, I'm so tickled for the kids. I'm looking forward to seeing pictures. It's always an exciting time to see them dressed up and, and all of them participating in such a special time in their lives, and they've missed out on so much already.
And such a special venue.
Yes.
I know, I was talking to the high school.
Right.
I do not know of one that's been any more magnificent than what you all are going to get this year.
Yes, yes.
I know there was, like, concerns about tickets maxing out, like, if there's only a certain number of tickets that are going to be sold, because there's been lots of-
There were 200 pairs to be sold, and we're not close to that yet.
Okay.
We're still good. I also want to point out our high school principals, Mrs. Scholler and Mrs. Fallon, have done an outstanding job, along with Virginia Arrington, in taking care of this work, because it's not on campus, so it added a whole nother layer of complexity. And the prom committees, again, once we got things rolling, it has become quite an exciting event, and a lot, a lot has gone into it, but what a night to remember for these kids, and I'm glad to hear the excitement from you, Taylor.
All, all three of those women are unbelievable, and what they, what they do behind the scenes. Like, today, for the public to know that we got to the work session, and there's a bottle sitting on our desk, and it's a message in a bottle, and it had sand with seashells and decorated, and, and that was our invitation to the, to the prom, to the event. And it just means so much to me personally that they took the time out to include us as a board. It really means a lot. So, so I'm, I'm going to try to, I'm going to try to get there, if I can just find a date.
I'll figure a date, Ms. Evergreen.
There you go, Ms. Rose. All right. Let's see. Moving on, we have our consent agenda that we need approval on. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? The agenda is approved.
Oh, we need to vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. All right. Information items. Any information items?
I can add this in the information-
Okay.
-portion here. Today, we met with Ms. Etheridge, Mike Payment, Ben Stike Leather, our county manager. We met and had created a video to share with the public regarding what our capital plan is, and where, that should come out sometime next week, and it's going to outline how we are dealing with addressing the growth issues in our county, what our expansion projects look like, along with how we're going to deal with building a new school and modular units. So looking forward to sharing that with the public.
Yeah, that was, that was really nice. I'm looking forward to, to seeing the video and how they put it together, because it, it may be helpful for the public. You know, there's a lot of rumors circulating and going around. You don't know what to believe. But this is kind of a synopsis- believe, but this is kind of a synopsis of what we're doing and how we're moving forward and how we're working hand in hand with our local government officials, our county commissioners, as well as our county manager, and we're making great strides and making some really good things happen for our county and with the school renovations to our schools and the new school being built. I think everybody will be pleased about that. All right, board member and superintendent comments. Dr. Domney, would you like to start us off?
Sure. I attended the ribbon cutting of the new greenhouse at the high school, and would just like to thank Janet Rose and Abby Rose for having the persistence to keep on everyone to get this done. And while I was there, I also attended the plant sale that the FFA had and bought, you know, many plants as I usually do. And I'd like to thank the faculty, staff, administration, and just everyone who provided a yeoman's effort in getting us this far in the school year. And lastly, and I mentioned it usually each year at this time, that back when I was principal at Currituck County High School, we had never had an off-campus prom. And a couple of the students that were seniors that year approached me and asked if I would support an off-campus prom. And I said, "Yes, but we would have to get the backing of the school board." We approached the school board, and the school board authorized the very first off-campus prom. And were you there then, Robert, or you'd already graduated?
I was way after my time.
Not that old. I know Ms. Peters was a freshman at that time, so she probably didn't attend the prom.
My age away, Dr. Domney.
And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Domney. Ms. Craft?
Yes, I did visit all of our schools this month. I also attended the ribbon cutting and participated in spending some money for flowers. So I wanted to give a shout out to the JP NAP, FBLA, state winners, Madison Boyer, fourth place in job interview. We had Alex Tully, Anita Lynn, Riley Hughes, and Ian Starrett, first place in parliamentary procedure, and our own Albert McCardo, or McCurdo, top 10 in organizational leadership, and there were others. And also, the CCHS Ag Mechanics team, who placed eighth in the state competition. Congratulations to Carson Cato, KJ Davis, Nathan Bennett, Andrew Stevenson. Team member Carson Cato was second highest scoring individual in the state, so that was great for us. And also, our own Taylor McCarthy placed third in future business leader, and she will compete at Nationals this summer. And our own Daniel Walker placed third in job interview and will also be going to Nationals. And he also made the newspaper. A junior at Currituck County High School, Daniel Walker, placed first in the Outer Banks VFW post 10950 Voice of Democracy Audio Essay Scholarship Contest, and won some money. And I guess you're going to go to, have you gone to state already?
Oh, yes, ma'am, I won our state.
And he went to National.
So that came with more money. So congratulations, and we're proud of y'all.
That's awesome. Congratulations.
And I have the paper for you now.
Well, good. Ms. Peters?
Well, I just wanted to, since today is Administrative Professional Day, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank all of our administrative staff all throughout our county. Their role in our educational system is very important. I know they wear many hats each and every day. I also attended the greenhouse ribbon cutting ceremony. It was my first visit to that greenhouse, and it really is something to be very proud of. That is a very nice facility that will be used, and I, of course, purchased plants as well. So thank you to everyone who made that happen. That's very nice. I also visited CCHS, Currituck Middle, Mayock Middle, and the NAP School. It was just really nice being in their schools and taking a tour and just seeing some type of normalcy back. And thank you to Dr. Lutz, Ms. Fallon, and Ms. Gorza for taking that time with me. And I just, as everyone's been talking tonight, the excitement for the prom is, I think, something that these kids can certainly look forward to. I just went there on a tour during spring break with my daughter, and it really is a beautiful, beautiful sight, so I'm very excited for them. And thank you to the county for the venue and to all the businesses that are donating, because it really does show a lot of support when the community comes together and helps the seniors and something like that, so. And as, I'm just always so impressed with these student board members, because they just, every meeting brings so much to us and talk, and the way they present everything, and they're just, just wanted to commend you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peters. Ms. Rose?
Well, I want to say hats off to our FBLA winners, both at the high school, Currituck County High School and JP NAP. And we're well represented with student board members, with both Taylor and Albert being very active in FBLA, and are you as well, Daniel?
Yes, ma'am.
You are. And hats off to our FFA winners on the state level. I know Ms. Craft mentioned the Ag Mechanics, I believe, but also Luke Morgan. I believe he placed third in the state for creed speaking.
And he's a freshman.
And he's a freshman, so hats, it's usually a freshman that does that creed speaking, but hats off to him. Hats off to our readers at the elementary schools and all the money they raised with the Read-Athons. I attended the ribbon cutting as well. That greenhouse is wonderful. I was very impressed with the horticulture students that were on hand, and the plants they grew were just as pretty as any I've seen at any commercial greenhouse, so hats off to all of you for that hard work. I want to give a big shout out to everybody that's had a hand in making this prom possible for our seniors. I know it's been a lot of work, and central office, high schools, talking to our commissioners, and it really has been a community effort, and I think it will be a night to remember for our students. And I know this hasn't been an easy year, but we're on the home stretch, and I want to give a shout out to all faculty and staff members and to the class of 2021. I know it's not been probably what you thought of, but you have persevered, and you will go far, so.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Dr. Lutz?
Certainly. A quick reminder that if you have a kindergarten student, please register your kindergarten student. If you have other students, you need to be registered, you're coming back to school, please register as early as possible. Really helps us with our staffing and how we are going to allocate staff for next year. Update on our strategic plan. It is up and moving. We are gathering a tremendous amount of both quantitative and qualitative data, gathering input across the county from teachers, all staff, this board, the board of commissioners. Multiple interviews are being conducted. We had a parent night last night. Look forward to sharing that information with you this summer and to help guide our future. Mrs. York mentioned the CARES Act funding. That's going to come in a couple of different blocks. I'll have a much more robust update on that in the May meeting. May 1st, if you are a student that is attending a school that is not your home school, parents, please turn in that form. We need that form turned in. Again, May 1st is the deadline for that. Last, I don't want to forget, it is our Administrative Professional Day, and these meetings have gone off without a hitch for 18 years, because Ms. Jones, who does not want the spotlight, but she's getting it, has done a tremendous job, and she knows this district. She is our historian, and she is outstanding in her work, so thank you.
She is. Woo! Thank you, Dr. Lutz. I just want to echo a lot of your sentiments. I feel the same way about everything that you brought up tonight and the prom and the community effort to pull it off. It's, you know, takes a village, and that's what we have in our small community of Currituck County. I really feel like everybody comes together for the betterment of Currituck, and it's home for me, and I'm very proud to be a part of it. The greenhouse, what a wonderful new facility, and thanks to Ms. Rose and her daughter Abby for their perseverance, dedication to just move that project forward. It became kind of a, not a joke, I shouldn't say that, but we would laugh because she was, she was just like, "We got to get this greenhouse, we got to get this greenhouse." And we'd be like, "We don't have any money." And she's, "Well, we've got to find a way, and we're going to do it." And sure enough, you know, it happened, and thanks to her and thanks to our commissioners, and it was, it was a group effort, don't get me wrong, but-
Absolutely.
-but she steered that project, and I just want to publicly thank her for her efforts, and it does not go unnoticed. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart, because the kids are going to enjoy that facility for years to come. I would like to see your name on that greenhouse.
Oh, I would like to see the whole board's name, not just my name.
Well, you know, because you didn't stop, Janet, and that's, you know, you should be very proud of the way that you headed that up. So we'll talk about that, but I would love to see your name on that greenhouse, you and Abby.
It was a group effort.
Well, it was, but we couldn't have done it without you. So with that being said, my hats off to her and everyone else that made it happen. I thank everyone for your efforts, for your day-to-day efforts of keeping our kids safe and healthy, and we are on the home stretch, thank goodness.
Yes.
It's been quite a year for everyone, and we can see the light at the end of the tunnel, and I'm looking forward to that, as long as it's not a train coming towards us, if it's a true light. I am looking forward to that. And with that being said, do I have a motion that we adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and any discussion? Okay, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.